Hello, everyone. Welcome to our March 9, 2020 regular board meeting. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to a order. We're going to start this meeting with a statement from our superintendent, Dr. Khan.
Thank you so much, Mr. Frost. I just wanted to provide an update to the board on the actions that have been taken by the district so far in preparation for a response to the coronavirus or the COVID-19. As many of you know, some of you may know, on Wednesday of last week, a meeting was held for all school districts in the St. Louis suburban area to provide information about the prevention and spread of COVID-19. We had four members of our team who were able to attend that meeting and bring some valuable information about preventive measures for our students and staff, staff and deep cleaning measures that we could take at the school district. So we met as an administrative team to ensure that we were implementing all of the practices that were provided to us at that meeting. And as you know, on Saturday morning, we provided an update to our families, providing information about how we are informing ourselves of preventive and responsive measures for the coronavirus or the COVID-19. And then on Sunday, upon learning some information about a presumed positive diagnosis of COVID-19 in a St. Louis County member, I consulted with the superintendent in the school district of Ladue, and Ms. Katie communicated with several school districts in our area about how they were responding to that information. We held a conference call with our district administrators that evening and sought information, including our school principals, so that we could provide information to our families on the information that we had learned. And we drafted a letter to our parents providing that information. The purpose of that letter was really to ensure our parents that we were provided with the information and will be working with our families to make sure that our students and our schools are safe. Today, Dr. Amber Phillips was able to consult with the St. Louis County Department of Health, and they provided additional information and guidance for us moving forward, and were following all the recommendations and guidelines provided to us by the health professionals that we've been relying on. We will continue and we will and have continued to emphasize healthy practices of hand washing and cleaning in our school. We provided information about the fact that the virus, the virus is spread primarily through contact with individuals who have the virus or are sympathetic of the virus. Our district is sponsoring an Augustus bus trip to Florida. Kirkwood High School students are leaving on Wednesday for this trip. We have provided a link to the CDC travel website where families and staff can find updated information and guidance on any trips that they are planning outside of the United States. Because we have students and staff who may have compromised immune systems, we have asked the families who are traveling to potentially high-risk countries, share their travel plans with their school. We will follow the requirements and recommendations of the CDC for these families as they return from their trips. I think it's most important that we prepare and respond according to the information that's provided to us by all of the reliable health sources that have been provided, including the St. Louis County Department of Health and the Center for Disease Control and Prevention. This is not the time for us to panic, but to be prepared for the potential of the virus to spread. With this in mind, Doctors Pinter and Bailey are developing a plan for the potential of school closing so that we, for any extended length of time, should this be necessary, so that we can continue the learning of our students. At this time, school will proceed as usual. We will see all of our students hopefully here tomorrow. And I would like to give a special thanks to my administrative team for coming together to ensure that our schools are safe places where our children can continue to learn. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Khan. Next up, routine matters, 2.01, public comment session. I have five cards here. First name I have is Trish Harrison, 465 Kathy. Or Casey.
Kathy. Thank you. It has come to my attention that a group of parents at North Kirkwood Middle wanted both titles, "57 Bus" to be banned from the school library and not used in classrooms. Reportedly, this is due to bad language in the book. The book was one of several offered by an eighth-grade teacher as a choice in a social justice unit. Of the choices, many of these books have bad language. That's young adult books. But it was only the 57 bus that was challenged. But let's be honest, this book is not being challenged due to language. The main character is a non-binary youth who chooses to wear a skirt as a way of expressing their age and theirness. Are there bad words in the book? Yes. Do you think our kids have not used these words or heard these words? Of course not. The book deals with heavy issues, but the topic of social justice is a heavy issue. Our kids are dealing with heavy issues every day. What better way to learn, to think critically and to deal with those issues than to read about them? It is a nonfiction story of an African-American teen who sets a non-binary teen's skirt on fire while riding the same bus because they are very different. It was an impulsive act that had serious medical and criminal consequences. This book is about two families living in the same community who are very, very different from each other and are forced through something very tragic together, but they find a way to forgive, to heal, to have their stories teach each other about inclusivity, empathy, redemption, and accountability. How are those values and those lessons not important for our kids to learn? Reading about those differences teaches us to walk in other's shoes, to listen to their truths. And when we say this book is inappropriate, we are telling those children, your situation, your family, your life is inappropriate. Why should some parents get to decide what 600 kids should or should not be able to read? If a complaint is made, all parents should be aware and have an opportunity to have input. I don't think a lot of families know this is happening. It would be an injustice to all students and to all families who want to have access to this book if it was banned. Thank you.
Thank you. The next card I have is Darren Keplinger.
Good evening. Thank you all for your continuing service and work here in our district. I'm here tonight because what began as a request this last summer for compromises turned into something of a culture war. I was concerned about that, and I mentioned that over the summer, and here we are. It's hard sometimes in the midst to remember how we got here, and I just want to remind you of where we started, what we're asking for, and why. This started with us asking for you to put guidelines around what teachers share about their sexual and gender identity, what teachers are sharing. I'm not talking about students. I'm talking about the teachers. The truth is, we're here because the unilateral decision was made without a board review and without considering all the families in Kirkwood. The board could have, and I believe still can, fulfill their role in Policy BF, which states, "The superintendent shall have the power to implement action within the school district if an emergency situation should develop for which the board has provided no policy guidelines." There were none. However, the superintendent's decision shall be subject to review by the board in its next meeting. It has not happened. It is the superintendent's duty to inform the board of any such action and of the need for an official policy statement. This whole thing began with us asking for you to follow your own policy and create a policy that did not exist. The lack of clarity leaves the district vulnerable. In January, we went through the next step of Policy BF, and we specifically requested amendments to be made to certain current KSD policies. And so far, we haven't heard anything back regarding that. I'm not really sure why. The truth is that we've asked simply for the recognition and respect of our natural rights as parents and guardians to guide our children, specifically around subjects of sexuality, sexual identity, and gender identity. We are the front line. We know when they're ready, the growth and development shows us that, and we want them to enjoy their childhood as long as possible. There are two camps. There are those who think discussing topics around sexuality should begin in elementary school, and there are those who want you to hold off introducing those subjects until the right time in life, what they deem the right time. When you're at an impasse with two parties, you can agree to disagree, and that means that both stand out and neutrality is set. Neutrality is what we've asked for. And in asking for this, my husband and I have been openly demonized. We've been labeled. We've been called bigots, haters, anti-trans, anti-NGB. Parents and teachers have organized against us and openly expressed hate towards us. When we moved here, we never imagined Kirkwood was a place where disagreement couldn't exist. I thought a lot higher of this, and maybe in spite, we still can get past this. Because the truth is, we are actually for everyone, and we want to see everyone happy and successful, and that doesn't require agreement on everything. We are friends of the district. We are working so that everyone has a seat at the table. We want to honor our teachers and our librarians and trust them. We want students to thrive and develop. Or will you please have the courage to step up and fulfill your responsibility to us parents and citizens? Thank you.
Thank you. The next card I have is Stephanie Stewart. 132311.
Thank you. I'm Stephanie Stewart. I grew up in Kirkwood, and I chose to raise my children here because of the homegrown nature of our town and the quality of our public schools. I have a senior and a sophomore at the high school. Both of my children attended NKMS and Westchester. I'm here today because I heard that a group of parents were trying to ban a book at the NKMS library due to explicit language. I'm well aware that there are many books in the school library that contain similar language to the book in question, yet there is no call to ban those books. Then I heard the title of the book, "The 57 Buses." The subject matter in this book is near and dear to my heart, and I'm proud that my daughter Lily will be sharing with you in a moment why this book is so important. I'm here to address what I can only assume is driving the movement to ban the book. That is fear. I was raised to strive to understand that which I don't understand. I was raised to be tolerant and kind. I was raised not to shy away from change, but to examine why the change felt scary and meet the challenge head-on. I have raised my children to do the same. This book is much more than the few instances of explicit language. Our community has put technology in the hands of each of our children, and in doing so, we have given them access to information, much of which they're ill-equipped to handle. Why, then, the outrage over this book? What is so scary about allowing our adolescent children to read about and feel the intense nature of something that's part of our history? A book which creates empathy for all involved, addresses peer pressure, highlights the broken spaces in our society, showcases forgiveness, love, hope, faith, and so many other important issues for our middle-school-age kids to understand. I guarantee every one of our kids has read far worse on the internet. Banning this book over language puts us at risk of having to pull so many other great pieces of literature from the shelves of our library because they too contain this language. Banning this book because of the nature of the subject matter will leave a stain on our school community that I don't want to be part of. Kirkwood has been inclusive for the differences in my family. Let's keep it that way. Thank you.
Next card I have is Lily Brick. 132311.
Hello. My name is Lily. I'm a sophomore at KHS. I've been in the Kirkwood School District for my entire K-12 experience so far. I went to Westchester Elementary, and I'm here, and now I attend KHS. Around seventh grade here at NKMS, I realized that I did not identify with the gender that I was born as, male. And I began going by different names, and I asked my friends to use the pronouns she and her to refer to me. And freshman year, I realized that there was no way for me to be able to continue my life without transitioning publicly and making it known who I was. And I came out to my parents. I changed my name at school, and I started hormones on Valentine's Day this year. I read "The 57 Buses" in eighth grade, which was one of the hardest years in my entire school experience so far. One of, I felt so trapped and alone in my identity, and I felt completely and totally marginalized and ostracized from my peers, friends, my family, et cetera. And the truth is, I sincerely wish that my life was not like this. I wish that I was not transgender because I wish that I could have been born as the gender identity that I identify as, that my life could have gone on without the years-long struggle that I had internally against myself. And I remember feeling completely and totally alone in that struggle for a long time. And it looks like the 57 Buses are incredibly important for that reason. It's a reminder for kids like me that there are other people that are in your situation or other situations that are similar that you can relate. And there are other people that are in just as much pain as you, and that what we experience isn't something that we should be ashamed of because I can't change who I am. And Sasha Fleishman, the protagonist of "The 57 Buses," can't change who they are, and the other transgender children at my school cannot change who they are, and the teachers that go by MX titles cannot change who they are. And the single best quality of the transgender community is the ability to stay resilient in the face of our stories being silenced and the crimes that people commit against us and the hatred and the bigotry and the bullying. So that is what I am here to do today. I'm here to stand up for what I believe is true, and I'm here to defend a kid who was like me to make sure that their story is one that can live on in our library so that people who are in the situation that I can feel like it's okay. Thank you.
The next card I have is Neil McCloskey, 832 North Carolina.
Good evening, school board members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I'm a Kirkwood resident, and two of my children currently attend Kaiser Elementary. I'm here because I love our school district and I love our kids. I know that credibility means a lot to the school board, and I think that starts with respecting the value systems of all school district families. So when families come forward because their children are being pressured to use an honorific that they don't feel comfortable using, they shouldn't be demonized or labeled. Some of us have been mischaracterized as anti-LGBTQ or homophobic simply because we expect our children to be taught in a neutral learning space, free from promoting some ideologies and marginalizing others. I think that we can all agree that there is division within the community over this issue, and that it's not going to go away or take care of itself. We need to have a real conversation about creating a policy that's fair for everyone. If this is about diversity awareness, then it seems like all beliefs should be taken seriously. I would love for us to go from facilitating division to honoring the value systems of all school district families. There's a lot of truth to what everybody has said tonight, and I think that we're going to have a lot of work to do, but for the sake of our children, we have to get started somewhere. I think it should be sooner than later. Thanks.
That was the last card I have. Moving on in our agenda tonight, 2.02, approval of our agenda for the March 9, 2020 regular board meeting. This is an action item. Motion and a second to approve our agenda for this evening. All in favor, please indicate by saying hi. 2.03, awards and honors report. Indicate.
Thank you. I don't know what's covering that. So the first lady of Missouri, Mrs. Parsons, presented a proclamation to Westchester Elementary students, staff, and administrators last Wednesday during the all-school assembly. I know many board members attended that event, and you can see it, a picture on your screen. Also, the Kirkwood School District hosted the annual KSD Elementary Chess Tournament on Saturday, February 29, at night from middle school. 118 kindergarten through fifth-grade students competed in four rounds of matches. Students are invited to participate in before-and-after-school chess clubs at each elementary school for several months. The tournament serves as an opportunity for the students to compete among other schools in the Kirkwood School District. The program is coordinated with KSD gifted teachers, along with Brian Gerald, who supports the chess program and is known as the chessmeister by the students. Three students earned a perfect score, which means the student won four consecutive games. They are Bill Blinn, fourth grade at Robinson, Oliver Birkenberg, fifth grade at Kaiser, and Kiran Brosh, second grade at Westchester. In addition to individual championship awards, team scores were also kept. Teams are made up of students from each elementary school and split into two sections of students, third through fifth grade and kindergarten to second grade, and they're all included in our report. Competition is not over. On Saturday, February 29, Kirkwood School District Middle School Math Teachers hosted the annual KSD Middle School Math Contest. Eighty students from both NIFR and NORF competed in a variety of math events, including estimation games, individual writing competitions, and special problem-solving team activities. Thank you to all the students and adults who volunteered. Also, our local businesses that provided prizes and snacks, including Mobile on the Run, Starbucks, Pickleman, and Pretzel Boys. The National Geographic Society named Truman Kim, sixth grader at North Kirkwood Middle School, as one of the semifinal most eligible to compete in the 2020 National Geographic GOB State Competition. The competition was held at University of Missouri Columbia on March 27. Will we help? This is the second level of the National Geographic GOB competition, which is now its 32nd year, and you can see a picture of Truman on the screen there. The work of the AP Art Students at Kirkwood High School is on display at the Monday Club Gallery in Webster Groves with February, from February 26 through March 24. Students have artwork work in the exhibit, and they're also included in our report. The National Merit Scholarship Program has now determined which of the 16,000 semifinalists named in September 2019 had met all requirements to advance to finalist standing in the competition. All finalists would be considered National Merit Scholarships to be offered in 2020. The four Kirkwood High School students are Nathan Dimitri, Gillis Lowry, Ethan Peter, and Grace Williams. A certificate of merit from the National Merit Scholarship Competition was mailed to each of the finalists. Also, I know that many attended as well. The Kirkwood High School seniors are in scholarships during a ceremony on February 7. We recognized 15 student athletes continuing their academic and athletic careers at the collegiate level, and all the students are listed in our report. That includes our awards and honors report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations to Westchester and all the students on our report. Next up, approval of the contract for new superintendent. An introduction of David Oren. First, let me just say this. We went through an extensive search for a new superintendent, and I hope you guys heard about that. That announcement today, we're going to welcome David today to our Kirkwood community. Dr. Oren is currently superintendent in the Mott County R1 School District in Colorado. Prior to his four years as superintendent, he spent 18 years as an educator in Missouri, which included principal of Lee Somon North. Lee Somon North High School and Director of Secondary Education in the North Kansas City School. Dr. Oren spent eight years as a teacher, including four years as a social studies teacher and at North Kansas High School. Dr. Oren, he has power skills, calming demeanor. When you speak with him, you immediately feel like he's able to navigate and guide us to the best results for our students and our community. During the interview process, what stood out to me was the way he controlled the room, and I immediately felt like it was easy to have open dialogue with Dr. Oren. So please, everyone, help me and welcome Dr. David Oren. For the board, this is a motion to we need approval of Dr. Oren's contract today, and I also ask for approval to sign his contract today as well. So this is an action item. I have a motion and a second for approval of the contract for new superintendent. All in favor, please indicate by saying hi. Hi, it was both. Motion passes. Thank you all very much. Next up is our consent bulletin. I'll go through this. We will take these all as 3.1, approval of minutes for our February 10. Sorry, before I go through that, Dr. Oren, thanks.
We'll be back.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up, our consent bulletin. 3.1, approval of minutes for our February 14 special. 3.3, approval of February 12 closing. 3.4, approval of minutes for 3.5, approval of vouchers payable. 3.6, approval of personnel items. 3.7, approval to see bits for H vac units. 3.8, approval of award contract for President of the Feltor. 3.9, approval to award contract for President of the World Chair List. 3.10, approval to award contract, the door replacement. 3.11, approval of award contract for roof replacement. 3.12, approval of award contract for paving maintenance. 3.13, approval of award contract for NIFR locker replacements. This is an action item. You vote.
Second.
Motion and second to approve our consent bulletin. All in favor, please indicate by saying hi. Hi. Both votes. Motion passes. Next up, financial reports. Payable budget.
Good evening. Our operating revenues were $1,886,000. That mainly consists of current taxes of $781,000, Prop C revenue $512,000, and state revenue $347,000. Our collection rate for current taxes was 87% through February compared to 85.8% last year. Our operating expenditures for the month were $5,289,000, and most of that consists of salaries and benefits for our staff. In our debt service fund, the Prop 1 bonds that we issued in 2010 were Build America Bonds. We received an interest rate subsidy from the federal government equal to 35% of the interest cost from these bonds. And in February, we paid $4330,000 in principal, $364,891 in interest on these bonds. The subsidy payment was $120,000, $120,000, $177 that we received in January. The budget amendments for February, we had no revenue amendments. We had several expenditure amendments, but overall, they did not increase the expenditure budget. It's recommended that the amendments for February be approved.
This is an action item.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the financial reports. And was it a little, that little, it's any questions?
I have a question. I have a question, Dr. Oren. Your question rates of 87%. Our current fund balance is $44 million. And what is our percentage funding balance compared to our new policy? And what is our percentage fund balance if compared to our new policy of twenty-five percent?
Well, we began the year with a thirty-four point eight percent.
Same right now?
Yeah, well, the fund balance is high now because we've received, just recently received all of our tax revenue. So, this is, November is usually the low point, right before tax dollars come in, and then January, February is the high point, right after tax dollars come in, and then we use those funds the remainder of the, till next December when the process starts over.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for this, Dr. Olden?
So, what actually is it right now? I mean, we know it's high than it usually is the rest of the year, but what is it right now? But it's higher than thirty-four.
Sure, sure. But it's always high at this point.
Right.
We calculated it at the end of the year, and the purpose of the fund balance is because we need that money in reserves to cash flow our operational needs from July through November as we wait for additional tax dollars to come in for the new year.
Right. So, we made a new policy that we could keep it at twenty-five. It was thirty-four, how many months ago?
On July 1st, start of fiscal year.
And it's higher than that now?
Yes.
Okay, so you're not exactly sure exactly what percentage is?
No, I haven't calculated.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Can we have a motion and a second to approve the financial reports and budget amendments? All in favor, please indicate by saying hi. Hi. Vote. Motion passes. Next up, new business. Five point oh one approval toward contract for construction. Construction management firm is related.
Russ Leary is going to take this, and I'll answer questions as well.
Russ is our director of buildings and ground. Good evening. I would like to recommend Navigate Building Solutions for our construction manager and advisor for our project. They were the lowest bid out of three, and the contract will be contingent on the passing of the process.
So, yeah, we went through an RP process, and we also checked for references, and so Navigate is our recommendation.
Do you have, for Navigate, was there? I think we checked the references for that, and we talked about the district.
Yes, we talked to Union specifically. They're wrapping up a big project over there, Union Schools. They spoke very highly of them, and we also met individually with the four architects of record, and they all have had or have heard of Navigate, or worked with them or have heard of them, and they had wonderful things to say about them, each and every architect. So, we already have a good relationship between the architects and Navigate if they were to be brought on board.
And most of the staff on Navigate came from Parrick, which is a large construction management
Those staff that worked at Parrick, they worked in our district, or maybe they were in the community.
Yes. They've done work at Lindbergh, at Union, St. Charles Community College, along with a lot of municipalities also.
I think they're currently working with the city of Parrick.
I have a general question that I'm wanting to put in. But we're putting on our vendors tonight before the death of the process. So, is that our common process? That we already select our managers before it's announced?
Yeah, oftentimes, school districts select them beforehand, and in some cases, they start having professional services, they start on the professional services before the bond issue passes. So, we're just trying to get everything in place and ready to go should process pass.
Okay. And my next question is about one point eight million, construction services. I noticed that there's quite a range of difference in the proposal, up to five point three million. So, also, it looks like the cost that you're making, fifty-four million dollars for the building. And I'm wondering, what does that include as far as the difference between the two prices? It's quite a range from one point eight to five point three million.
It is. The costs are based on fifty-four million dollars in labor in actual construction project process.
Seventy million, so the fifty-four million includes all work that we're going to do. Seventy million includes professional services, furniture, equipment. Their fees are just tied to the construction portion only, which is the fifty-four million.
So, it's construction for all the projects? Not just in.
Correct, for all projects.
And then the company selected, full charge, the one million.
Yeah, that's the estimate, only fifty-four million. Yes.
And then the company that said five point three million, that comparable services?
Yes, they're going to man it with a lot of extra people.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to follow up on Andy's question. So, is it a time situation? Is that why you're going out and selecting all of these things before the passage of process? Is that?
Yes.
You said many people do this. I'm just wondering what our reasoning is behind it.
So, the additions, we have one year to complete the additions. That includes designing the additions, bidding them, awarding contracts, and so that only leaves less than a year to actually do the work, probably ten months to do the construction. So, we have to have things ready to go as soon as possible. Similar with the school, we have two years to build a school. It'll take much longer to design a new school, and construction will take place over two winters, and you never know what will happen with two winters. So, we need as much time as possible, make sure that we open the additions on time and the new school on time.
And just, yeah, for anybody else to let them know, it is very common, most government agencies, departments, schools, will all hire the designer, the CM contract upfront if, you know, proposals on the ballot to save time, as well as to start answering any
Any other questions for, for video? So, this is an action item. Motion and a second for approval toward contract for construction management firm. All in favor, please indicate by saying hi. Hi. Vote. Next up, five point two. Five point oh two approval toward contract for the Arkansas.
Yes, Trish is coming up, and I will help as well. Trish is our special projects manager.
Good evening, everyone. The facilities department solicited requests for qualifications for architectural and engineering firms back in the fall of 2018 in preparation for upcoming projects in the, through the year 2022. The sixteen are queues that we received for architectural firms and ten engineering firms were approved by the Board of Education November 19th, 2018. The architectural teams were interviewed on February 27th, 2020 to identify the strategy for the process projects. The interview team was comprised of principals, the maintenance supervisors, and central office administrators. Based upon the process scope of work, we recommend the following teams for the following projects. Bond architects would be the architect of record for the new elementary school on the Lindemann property. Archimages would lead the architectural team for the North Kirkwood Middle School renovations and the maintenance facility additions and renovations. Inner Architects would be the architect of record for the Kirkwood High School addition and renovations. Nifer Middle School addition and Tillman Elementary School, new library and gymnasium. And Insight Design Studio would be the architect of record for the North Glendale Elementary and the Kirkwood Early Childhood Center security entrances. The contracts will be written to be contingent upon the passing of process, and the contracts' amounts will be negotiated with each firm at the preliminary part of the process.
Thank you. This is an action item.
Second.
Motion and a second. I hope approval toward contract and questions for Trish for.
Trish, can you, you said you got sixteen qualification packages received, and you narrowed it down to these four firms for the various projects that they're providing. Can you just briefly describe why you chose each of these firms? What made their qualification special for you?
Sure. They, in consideration for all the different types that we do, projects that we do, Prop Two projects, and in anticipation that we could potentially have a capital improvements bond issue coming up, we thought through that and selected the firms based upon criterias that were strengths, that they, all characteristics that they had, and what we knew about the firms. We called their references and found information about them. We consider the size of the firms, their specialty, they all have school district experience, but some have more extensive experience than others do. Some just have a style that tends lends to a real strong design characteristics that that's kind of, they're strong in leadership in that way, but other firms tend to be more roll up your sleeves and get it done and very technical oriented type of folks. One of the firms, Insight, even had a piece of software that we thought could be very beneficial to some potential characteristics that we might need for the bond issue, and we thought that that might be of good to have in our toolbox, and we considered that. So, we really considered all their strengths and weaknesses so that we had a good group of folks that we could rely upon and call upon as we needed for each of the projects.
Sorry, one more. You said that if process passed, that we would go into negotiations with these firms, and that price, that would come back to us then at that point?
Yes, we can bring them back. We, yeah, we can bring them back to you so that you have a piece. And it'll be a percentage of the construction.
And if those negotiations don't go the way that we want to at that point?
We could negotiate with, we could select an alternate firm and try and negotiate with them to be within our.
From the original sixteen ones?
Well, it would be from the four architecture firms that we have selected. So, out of that list of sixteen, the twelve were engineering firms, and we selected from all the different disciplines, civil engineers, structural engineers, mechanical engineers, traffic engineers, et cetera, so.
And the construction management firm will also assist us with the negotiation.
Why would the firm have four firms in every project?
They will be running concurrently. Strategically, thought that it would be good to be able to divvy up the work so that it was dual within a short timeframe. So, we thought that would be a really good strategy to be able to accomplish everything with staffing within their firms, just based on past experience. Firms seem to have too much work and not being able to accomplish, to meet, you know, the needs of the project effectively, so we thought this would be a really good strategy to be able to get our projects done in a timely manner and do very well on the projects.
So, then, how much priority do they have? They're all the same high priority?
Absolutely.
So, they're all in the same schedule?
Yes, they are. So, if the bond issue passes in April, we're ready to hit the ground running and start the projects immediately. I've already laid out a schedule, a potential schedule for the projects to begin the design work. We'd start with preliminary design, gathering information from the stakeholders, and immediately going to the schematic designs and community engagement as well as, and then upon the approvals, just moving to design development, construction drawings, and start construction. We're very, very strategically planning and scheduling for being able to accomplish everything in the time schedule that we have presented.
At least it takes two years to build the school, and then it didn't take long to design it.
For the new elementary school, at least, if I had to guess, probably, you know, ten months in design and construction. Yeah, yeah. So, 2022 is for the new elementary, and then the additions and renovations at the schools follow 2021. And hopefully, we could do the secure vestibules potentially this summer. It might be tight, but we're going to strive to do that. Thank you.
Sorry, I think there was confusion on that. What year do you anticipate the school would be open for students?
The new elementary school will be the fall of 2022.
Any other questions? During that, I have a motion and a second for approval toward the contract for the Arkansas. All in favor, please indicate by saying hi. Vote. Motion passes. Next up, five point oh three.
Thank you.
Five point oh three approval toward contract for financial advisory.
We issued an RFP for financial advisory services for the bond issue that will be voted on in April. All fees will be contingent upon the passing of process. Some of the services that are included with a financial advisor is financial planning and advisement, coordinating the marketing of the bonds, including the timing of the bond sale and the solicitation of bids from underwriters, assisting with the preparation of all necessary documents, resolutions, certificates, and statements pertaining to the bond issue, and investment management advisements. We received five proposals. They were evaluated based on the firm's prior experience in municipal bonds in Missouri and school financing in Missouri, the firm's organization size, structure, and comparable experience, their qualifications of personnel assigned to the work with the district, and their responsiveness to the proposal and required services that we requested. We received five bids. All proposals were sent to the Budget and Finance Committee and reviewed and discussed during our meeting in February. Myself and the Budget and Finance Committee are recommending Piper Sandler to serve as the district's financial advisor. Piper Sandler was the most qualified firm and is ranked number one, is ranked the number one financial advisor in Missouri based on number of bond issues. Three local school districts, Webster, Lindbergh, and Rockwood, are currently using Piper Sandler as their financial advisor, and each of these districts were contacted, all of them reported being very pleased with their services provided by Piper Sandler and the outcome of insolicitation events and bids for their bond issues. So, I'm recommending Piper Sandler.
This is an action item. Give approval.
Second.
Motion and a second for approval toward contract for financial advisor. Any questions for this, Dr. Olden? Just to make a brief comment, having sat in those meetings, it's fantastic to see the interaction of the budget committee and the resources that we have in our community that are willing to help the board and the whole district make, you know, the best financial decisions again. Sorry for the future.
Yes, I'd like to thank them as well. They're a great asset.
I agree with you, Boyko. They do a great job, and thank you for checking the references, because one of the bids was very low, and the one you chose was not below, and I think you already spoke to the value that they add to the process, and I think that's a great decision, and that was a great decision. I just have a quick question for you. The way the interest rates are coming, when are bond rates will be locked in?
As soon as possible. It would probably be sometime in May, is what I'm guessing, but we'll try to lock it in as soon as we can.
Can I have a motion and a second for approval toward the contract for financial advisor? All in favor, please indicate by saying hi. Hi. Vote. Motion passes. Five point oh four, approval notice of election for April 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Frost. So, this is the notice of the annual school board election, which is coming up for the Kirkwood School District of St. Louis County, Missouri. Notice is hereby given to qualified voters of Kirkwood School District, St. Louis County, Missouri, that the annual school board election in the district will be held on Tuesday, April 7th, 2020, commencing at 6:00 a.m. and closing at 7:00 p.m. Central Daylight Savings Time on said day, and that at said election, there will be submitted to qualified voters the following propositions for a board of directors in the Kirkwood School Board for a term of three years. years. Three candidates, three members on the school board will be elected. The candidates are Chad Kavanaugh, Jennifer Pangborn, Nicole Sharon, Julie Backer, and Michael Buckner. Voters will select three candidates, and the three candidates for membership of the Board of Education receiving the highest number of votes shall be elected. And this is by the, by the order of the Kirkwood School District Board of Education in St. Louis County, Missouri, on the ninth day of March 2020. And this is to be signed by our Board of Education.
One thing I get to do all the time. And for the board, it's an actual item to approve. Sorry, yeah, go ahead. Actually, this is a match.
Second.
Motion and second for approval of the notice of election for April 2020. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Next, five point oh five, approval of board meeting dates for 2020 dash 2021.
Thank you. Dr. Cullen. It is that time of year again when we are approving of board meeting dates for the 2020, 2021 school year. The meeting dates have been provided to Board of Education and Board of Docs, given the efficiency of this year's scheduling of one work session and one board meeting per month, the proposed calendar for board meetings to follow the same patterns for next year, with the exception of the month of December due to winter break.
This is an action item.
Move approval.
Motion and second for approval of board meeting dates for 20 dash 21. Any questions for Dr. Cullen?
It's just, I think one meeting on Tuesday after Martin's Birthday, and one year we were able to change this, and I just would say to consider maybe changing that Tuesday to another Monday, but not essential to discuss. Okay. Please. I have. So. But.
I would appreciate it.
Okay, please. I think. Thanks.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's.
Also, we're setting up.
Thank you.
Yes, because it's on our good.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of board meeting dates for 2021. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Motion passes. Five point oh six, lodging of MSBA policy revision for J.C. School of Education. This is a first read. Dr. Cullen.
Great, thank you, Mr. Frost. So this came to our attention, that was brought to our attention by Dr. Matt Daley. He has submitted a policy on joint, because that work is coming up for us moving forward. And so he noted in the current policy, it states that the boundaries of attendance centers for each, and said, elementary school in the district will be established by Board of Education. But we wanted to just remove the word elementary, because it's really the boundaries of attendance centers for each school and the district that will be established by Board of Education. So not just elementary schools. When we sent that in for approval through MSBA, they also pointed out that we should amend the first, part of the first sentence in the last paragraph to say that unless, unless otherwise prohibited by law, the Board of Education may close certain schools due to outside enrollment due to crowded conditions. So it was just a, a workaholic situation, and they felt that went more clearly to change that provision.
Can you say it one more time?
Sure. I'll read what they are recommending. Unless otherwise prohibited by law, the Board of Education may close certain schools to outside enrollment due to crowded conditions. So, and that's what our current practices, we do not allow students to enroll in case wish, outside the school district, because the numbers of students that we are currently educating are. Yeah, they, yeah, yeah. It's.
No, I know, I have, I'm.
It was hard to, it was hard to tell from the cross out exactly what the wording was, so that's why we are all asking you to repeat it a couple times, because it was hard to tell.
No, I appreciate it. I just, I do better at this.
Right.
This is it actually. Second. Motion and a second for lodging of the MSBA policy revision J.C. Any questions for Dr. Cullen?
Start it up. I guess my question, thanks, Stephanie Bailey, you'll be convening a big committee of people, and they might also have some other additional changes for the policy or suggestions. So I'm wondering if that would be appropriate time also to amend the policy as well. I remember when we did our discipline policy work, we had quite a few things that we added to it, so not knowing what's coming up, there might be more, so we might want to extend the length of time to consider the policy. Well, you could just leave it over there.
Oh, yeah, so we would watch it.
Right, when, after your committee work, just something that has worked in the past.
Just, just as a reminder, that committee will probably be meeting over, over the course of a year as well, just to make sure we're intentional about that process. So.
Although, I mean, it is.
Yeah, let's just change it for, let's reduce it. I'm gonna say it last time, yeah.
I think all, whatever committee is working on, they will refer to policy guidance on your work. But then also.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, who's the, who's the motion?
All I need.
I have one question as well. Go ahead. The language must otherwise prohibited by law, are there current students from outside the district who are educated, who would fall in that category of, that would be prohibited by law, to exclude them? There's always a chance that's gonna happen, and the law piece may be that there's a legal agreement, and that there are other components just based on individual student situation. So that's kind of a catch-all, just to make sure that future boards don't try to, you know, manipulate situations regarding individual kids.
Those are students who may be obligated by that.
Correct. The Kindergarten Act, or foster children, or other specific situations like that.
I do have a motion and a second for lodging of the MSBA policy revision J.C. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Next, six point oh one, 2021 school year class size update.
Good evening. We are gonna take a peek into next school year. It is really early, so we usually start these conversations in January, we look at current enrollment and staffing for the following year. March is still very early, because we still have kindergarten enrollment is open, and a lot of those moves that happened over the summer have not taken place yet. So you're gonna see the word preliminary quite a bit throughout this presentation. We'll just keep that in mind as we move along. So spring preliminary enrollment. Enrollment in class sizes, our process is that we look at students who are currently enrolled, promote those students all to the next grade level, and use the mid-series projections from Dr. Coffrin for kindergarten staffing allocation. Now, we won't release the kindergarten section until we actually have the children enrolled, but we need to allocate the staffing so we aren't caught in a bad spot as we go through the summer. So these are students who are currently in our system. We are not using any additions due to the projections for grades one through twelve, just the projections for kindergarten. We're gonna take a reminder of our class size guidelines, highlighted in pink. Kindergarten, those guidelines are twenty, first and second grade up to twenty-two, third through twelfth grade, twenty-five students per class. To look at our elementary staffing guidelines, we used to have a formula or a process that was very wordy, and it was very confusing. So if you had one student over the current guideline in each section, we would open a new section. So that was a little bit difficult. So we put the actual numbers for the number of sections on the left compared to the grade level and the guideline for the students going across on the right. So the number of sections is the same as the number of classrooms in a grade level in a building. Little language that we use. I know that these are very, very small numbers, and I'm going to apologize in advance, but look at the color as opposed to necessarily the teeny tiny number. This is all of our elementary schools. Again, we've taken those kindergartners, we've promoted them to first grade for next year. We then look at the new class size guideline for first grade and assign the appropriate staffing. Any of those classrooms or sections that you see in yellow are at the guideline. So if you see the second grade column, which is the first from the left, you see we have some yellows, and we also have some reds. So those are current classrooms who would have twenty-two children in them, which is the guideline for second grade. The ones that are in red are one student over the guideline. So we would really be watching these pretty closely as the spring progresses, and when we start to get new enrollments, we would look to see when it was appropriate to either add a section, and in some other cases, to reduce a section if our enrollment were to dip. So just as a reference point, the current year, we have one hundred and twenty-eight elementary classrooms, K through five, in our five elementary schools, and for next year, with the kindergarten enrollment that we have projected, we are looking at one hundred and thirty-two classrooms. Just as a, just as a point of reference, we need really four more classrooms for next year if those projected enrollments do actually occur for kindergarten enrollment. Let's look at kindergarten enrollment. We have online enrollment this year. Last year was our very first year, so we were working out some kinks, but we feel really great this year, our second year in. Our buildings feel really good about the numbers. You can see each school listed on the left. We're only looking at kindergarten here. You can see the first number of, column of numbers are applications that have been started, so registration packets that have been started and are sitting waiting for approval. The completed packets are the ones that have been side-sealed and delivered, and those kids are coming in August. The total number represents the top, sum of the two, and then next to it, we have the mid-series projection number from Dr. Coffrin, and the percentage we are to the projection. So Kaiser has seventy-five packets, sixty-three of those are completed. Their projection is one hundred and eleven students, so they're sixty-eight percent of the way to the projection, and it's only March 2nd, the date of these numbers. So that is, that's good. That's a good. Anything over fifty percent, we feel pretty good about. The, we would feel good about the projection that we were already at fifty percent of those numbers in March. You may want to note that our friends at Westchester are already at ninety-five percent. So we actually, likely tomorrow, will add a hold for kindergarten at Westchester for a sixth section, which is gonna present some space discussions for them. I think they have a plan already, but they'll need to look at that again, because they will likely get to six sections since we're already in March, and we have a whole lot of summer left to go. Middle school and high school are a little bit different, because those are driven by student schedules. We can look at the current nineteen-twenty numbers, and then looking at the twenty-twenty-one numbers, again, those students are in our system. We are not adding students that we normally would capture over the summer. These are just kids now, who we assume are gonna be back next year. So you can see the numbers for Nifer and the numbers for North Middle. We won't have class sizes yet, because we need to get those schedules finalized first before we know how many kids are gonna be in each section. Similar with Kirkwood High School, they're gonna, they are sitting right now, they're ninety students, they're plus, is that ninety? No, sixty students, sorry. I don't work, plus sixty students already for next year, and we haven't even hit summer enrollment. So they have about, I think it was last count, four hundred schedules that they needed to go in and hand-schedule, which is never a fun task, but once they have those finished, we should be able to have some pretty good ideas of what those class sizes will be and any additional staffing need that they would need. So Mr. Rome was kind enough to add five FTE in our budget for next year due to growing enrollment. We have several items for consideration. I already mentioned four elementary classrooms, one at Kaiser for kindergarten, one at Robinson for kindergarten, sorry, two at Kaiser for kindergarten, my mistake, and then one at Westchester for fifth grade, and then we'll actually add one more for Westchester for kindergarten. English language, language learners, we're seeing an increase in students participating in that program, and an orchestra continues to grow, and they need additional staffing. Counselors at our elementary schools, that has been a request. Social emotional learning coach has been a request, and then a request for business FTE at Kirkwood High School. These positions have not been released, they're up for discussion still, but this is just a portion of the list of staffing additions that have been requested at this point. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
The, the building that's at ninety-five students, and I'm, I'm talking about the, yeah.
Good, right, right.
I know that, and this is just your experience being in this for a while, that sometimes we have families that rule off the toe and pass the last thing.
Yes, that's, that's true.
I envision some generally, for some of these that are higher than fifty percent already, I mean, we haven't even hit summer yet, and we have some percentages there reaching our projection. So we already have plans in place for not only Westchester, but other buildings have contingency plans into that. Yes, or?
We have plans in place for the number of sessions that we were projected to have, but if they grow even beyond the projections, I know Westchester has theirs ready, and other schools, they have an idea of what their next classroom would be, but they haven't necessarily been forced to make those decisions yet.
So, Mr. Frost, are you talking about classroom spaces or classroom features?
Vote. And we typically will look at kindergarten enrollment every week, and all class size enrollment every week, so we, we have a pretty good eye on when it, when it bumps up, it's pretty high, when we need to make some action.
So guys, if we get to a point where we utilize all our options, our next move would be to?
For classroom space. We, we could, we could, as a very, 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 very last resort, we could increase class size temporarily for the year and co-teach classes if there isn't enough physical space to open a new section. I think we would displace every, every other class that we're able to before we would do that, but that may be a real consideration that we have to look at. If not this year, then the following.
And you're, when you think displaced, that's our music, you would displace that?
Anyone who's occupying a sizable enough room that could hold a class.
And you'll just keep us updated with those differences?
Of course.
This is the first of monthly updates, so we decided to start a little bit earlier this year, just to come to.
Yeah, so looking at your chart there, you've got six sections at higher because the projection was one hundred and eleven.
Correct.
So we're only sixty-eight percent of the way there. So it might not need six sections, but we might need another one at Westchester, because we don't really know right now. So if you add all those up for this year, we have, I think, four hundred and thirty-two kindergartners, is that correct?
For the current school year? I don't, you know, and I have to go back and add real quick.
I, I believe it. So that's just a little piece from last year's total number of kindergarten numbers. So I'm just wondering, so that's about, it's about four hundred and thirty-two, it was four hundred and forty-one, and the resident kindergartners are about the same this year, four twenty-seven as compared to four twenty-eight last year. So that's kind of our range. So right now, we've got about three hundred and twelve right here on this chart, and it's only March, and we have online. So do you have any perspective or feeling about last March where we were as comparison?
No, I usually would start getting the kindergarten numbers closer to the end of April, because I would get them directly from the secretaries. Because online enrollment was new last year, we didn't really feel confident that those were really good comparable numbers, because it was brand new and we had some glitches to work through.
So looking at those. Looking at those total numbers at least, you might have an opportunity to move some non-resident students around if there was space up the yellow bowl in the outer school for the short term, for the new incoming kindergarten.
I would think that would be an option, we haven't had that discussion of non-resident kindergartners yet.
No, I think it's just for space up the yellow line, the space is full.
Sure.
We also have to consider where siblings are.
Right, of course. But we're not very, except for Westchester, it looks like we're not very, we will see, right? Thank you.
So I think that it's really important to discuss real quick about moving non-resident students, and making sure that we have things in place, because the non-resident students are teachers' kids, and I understand that, you know, okay, so. But if they're already at that school, say in second grade, we could not move that child.
I think, I think, no, this is kindergarten, no, sorry, just kindergarten.
Okay, okay, so where do we stand then if we have a teacher's child who's in second grade, and they have a kindergarten child? Is that something that we can?
Well, we've not made those placement sure.
Okay.
So I think when we go and look at the new kindergarten enrollees who are staff children, we will look at the sibling factor, and then make the best decision that we can at that point for that child.
For that child, so we're going to be making decisions that are less for?
All students.
Your other question?
I want to thank you for the one chart that shows, you know, the staffing ranges we always talked about, it was like, it was really helpful, so I appreciate that. Have you had any discussions as we're looking at these growing needs on that building and running out of space, how flexible we're going to handle schedules with lunches, lunchrooms, some of the spaces that we're really struggling to meet, what we're wanting to do?
I think some of those schools that have been through the number of a sixth section in a grade level or two can shed some advice for the other schools that haven't been through that. For instance, Westchester has not had a classroom with six, or a grade level with six sections, so there's some wisdom to be gleaned from other schools that have gone through it for a few years. There are some strategies where they split a couple of classrooms up over other grade levels, so maybe they're eating with a different grade than their, like their kindergarten class, maybe they're split with first grade or second grade, really to help try to get kids in and out in an appropriate time, but that's not, we don't love that either, because then you don't get kids your same age. So there are some strategies out there, and we'll just have to figure out what fits for that building at that time.
It's putting a real strain on our facility. And then, we had an issue at the beginning of the school year because of our enrollment going, and having a waitlist for a mentorship, and my understanding is that there are a lot of parents who are concerned right now about what they're going to do next year, when we don't have space for all of the students that need a mentorship, we don't have staff, and we started to think about that with the growing kindergarten enrollment.
We have talked about it, one is the space issue, of course, and then the other is the staffing capacity issue. We've thrown out some options that we really need to consider with a bigger group of folks, one of them included, could we take some kids to the middle school for that program? Is that appropriate? Is that even a good idea? We need to go through that, we need to get some parent involvement to decide if that's even a viable option or not, or if that makes things even muddier for folks. So there are some options out there, I don't know that they'll be able to increase a considerable amount of capacity and meet the waitlist requirement, but we certainly are going to work on it.
Yeah, they just, they're really, we're hearing more and more about it, and that's why they're becoming concerned as well as case issues, their waiting list is growing and growing and growing, right?
Right. Thank you.
And my kindergarten is.
Congratulations, don't forget to register for next year.
Yeah, just, just to confirm, the number of kindergartners are projected to decline over the next five years, to the lowest numbers in twenty-four, twenty-five from our demand of recruiting, so we have a need right now, we do, and we deserve a chosen need, but as we look towards the future, and the projection next year is high, but then the following year is even off, so.
For kindergarten, for, yeah, just talking about kindergarten.
I have, just want to make sure that I understand this right, you mentioned that we'll need four more rooms if the kindergarten projections hold, right?
Correct.
So that means if Westchester needs another kindergarten, it'd be five more rooms?
They would need two more than they have this year.
Right, district-wide we're talking.
Yes, it would be five.
Five more rooms, and district-wide, my understanding is the only school with an with an available classroom right now is that Tillman has one, right?
Correct.
So at least three, four rooms that are not classrooms are going to be used as classrooms next year.
Correct.
And then, the other thing is that that projection is based on the idea that the same number of, for example, kindergartners we have are going to become first graders, the equal number will become second graders.
Correct.
And so historically, we see that each cohort actually increases students by about one percent or so each year, right?
Correct.
So that happens, we might also need more.
Right, so when you, when you jump back to this, the ones that are in yellow and red, those are the ones that we really have to watch, because if they even grow by a small number of students, that second grade class at Tillman, if they get two more students, really we would need to open another section for them.
So that's like a two percent.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Boykow, that's true, so you're using the current class size numbers and moving them up a year?
Correct.
And then are you also looking at cohort analysis by grade level, because that would give you maybe a percent between grades, you can check and see which grades might have that little bit, so, and then your yellow and red.
Right, and we wait for those people to actually enroll before we're going to open a new section, just so we don't end up having to reduce one later, that's always the main situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Next, seven point oh one, future. Sixteen through to twenty, the spring breaks, okay, so we won't be here. After that, we have March twenty-third, there'll be no school. March twenty-third, there'll be no school. March twenty-seven is our next seven thirty-eight, it's on the legislative app, because Clayton School District is hosting. Saturday, twenty-eighth, there is a community board here, so Saturday, March twenty-eighth, the ninety-eight, we'll have a community board here in the ASC. Friday, April tenth, is another legislative advocacy meeting, and then Monday, April thirteenth, is our next scheduled regular, regularly scheduled board meeting. Dr. Cadd, is there any proposal session?
May I just add one thing?
Yes.
I don't know if we talked about March thirtieth, that had been regularly scheduled board meeting session, but we're encouraging our board members in the Senate to attend the MSBA Spring Conference, which is held in Witten Gardens that evening on the fifteenth.
Yeah, don't forget to go.
April seventh.
April seventh.
It's a very important day, you guys, get out and go with April seventh, everyone. Please don't lose. Dr. Cadd, is there any first motion? Broke up, wait.
Approved, yes.
Can I?
Yes.
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 We need a motion to adjourn.